You ready? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We have everybody in attendance. Students reps aren't here, so I don't know if they'll be here later or not. Guessing their activities. How about everybody stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. First item up, we'll need to approve the meeting's agenda. You didn't read the adjusted.
I didn't know.
If there's no adjustments, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Greg, second by Ann. Any discussion on the agenda? You're reading, no discussion. All those favor approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Second up will be the Board of Education Superintendent Evaluation. And... Ann, do you have the summary? I don't have it either. Finalized version of it? Do we have it someplace accessible?
Is it in a folder?
I don't have it either. Do you want to move it to October, or do you want to... Does anybody want to do that? Yeah, we can move it to October.
I can make a motion to table that board item till October.
Okay. Motion by Ann to table. Do we have a second?
Alright, second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion on the tabling till the October meeting? Regular meeting? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those favor approving it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. And we'll table it. So we have the summary typed up, but I'm assuming Emily would have it. Opportunities for visitors to address the board. I don't hear anybody, so let's move on to acknowledgements. We have school foundation. Thanks for all the hard work to raise money for teachers and programs at our school. We have our technology staff, it's IT Appreciation Day, it's the 23rd. And school board members, it's School Board Appreciation Month. So, Mr. Court, did you have anything else to add?
No, I just want to say thank you to our foundation for all their work this past... Last spring, this summer, and this fall. And our tech team, thank you for all their work. IT Appreciation Day is September 23rd. And School Board Appreciation Month is September, so thank you to all of you for all your work. I also want to add thank you to our building principals, Mr. Nelson, Mrs. Judge Sesci, for all their work. Getting the year started, a lot of hours, time, getting out the school year to a great start. We appreciate what they did and have done.
Alright. Should we move on to administrative reports? We have elementary principal lady report from Mr. Nelson.
We're starting at 4:31, right where we ended last year. Although we have got a couple students have registered the last couple days, but so we're up a couple. A couple things were not on the agenda. Hire Anissa Berg and Alyssa Eppard as pairs at the elementary. And I want to thank Naomi Gutierrez for her work last year as a pair at the elementary. The first week of school, we have the ELL graduation. Last spring, we had 16 students graduate from ELL. And they had a great ceremony for the students that they enjoyed. We have a total of 143 students right now in the elementary ELL program. And our ELL staff does a wonderful job with those students. Bus safety was completed by all grades. Tomorrow is picture day. So all the kids will come in, and they're very desperate. We'll try to get them through as quick as we can, so we don't have chicken strips and mac and cheese on their picture. So... Now, we completed the first of our five fire drills that we are required to have each year. The other day, and that went fairly smooth for the first one. There were only a few tears in the lower grades, kind of scared of what's going on. But as we get going, they get more used to it. One thing I want to add to this is we got all of our letters material yesterday. We finally have that, so we're gonna have meetings Friday morning. Get that handed out to teachers, so they will be starting their letters training Friday and beyond. And our first session that we have with that group session is November 1st. So they need to have Unit 1 of their letters completed by that November 1st time. We... We're not alone in the ones receiving materials late. Think the company was overwhelmed with the rush of demand, but we finally have it, so we're getting going. Activities homecoming is September 30th through October 5th, ending with the gala and four soccer games that day. And before we meet again, soccer playoff dates are October 8th, 10th, 12th, and 15th. And we should be hosting a couple home playoff games this year, so it's always exciting and fun for the fans. And we had an ELL conference meeting today. And one of the things we decided we're gonna do is grab students from each school and have a leadership conference. They thought it was a good idea with two new schools joining a conference. And then all the double headers we're having, kind of have some student leaders from each school get together, talk about expectations, behavior at games. So they know that every school in our conference is on the same wavelength as far as what we expect out of our fans, so... It's been a very good meeting today, so... Any questions?
Could you... I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, on the ELL program, it was 143 in all this year?
Yep.
And 16 graduated from last year's program, correct?
Yep.
So... Are those 143, do they break even breakdown?
Always more than younger grades. So as we see, as I get older, we have more and more that graduate. And sometimes it depends on too, how many new families we get and where they come from. One cool thing this year, we had family with two brothers graduate at the same time. So the lady said that was pretty cool to have, I believe it was a fourth and fifth grade brother both graduate out of the program at the same time, so... Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Judge Sesci.
Our attendance is up a little bit from August, we're up to 393. I mentioned this before, but our PLCs are gonna continue to support the district goals with our building goals. And those will be increasing our reading math scores, support for reduced population, help our students create post-secondary plans through those student portfolios, and then exceed statewide graduation rate. Our building theme this year is GROW, with an emphasis on the row part of it. And the row is rigor, so R is rigor. Strive for excellence in academics, arts, and athletics. The O stands for opportunities. Just giving our kids chances in groups, activities, athletics, advanced coursework, certifications, career exploration, field trips, and other classroom experiences. And then wellness, this would be for students and teachers, knowing they're knowing that, or for them to know that resources are available. And then create positive relationships and maintain a balanced lifestyle. So we'll do things throughout the year, not really play off those three themes with students and teachers. This month, our teachers are doing a September Wellness Challenge. There's five little challenges that go with that. Things like shop local, go to our district yoga, attend a community event. Just kind of some fun, different things that get them moving and doing some fun things. Fast bridge training, we had seven of our staff go over in August to the elementary and join in on some fast bridge training that prepares them for REDACT requirements. It's still really unknown what the high school is gonna look like for REDACT. They're focusing up in third grade right now, but this was some training to get ready. Mr. Nelson mentioned homecoming activities, so Student Council will be selling buttons again this year for $3. You get the elementary before-school sell here during lunch. And then we'll be at home soccer games and the tailgate party on Friday. You'll see the dress-up days listed with each day. One new thing they've done this year is they're gonna go to a pub instead of sorbas for their celebration kickoff. It will be for grades nine through 12 at 7 o'clock. Wednesday, you'll see junior-senior games during part periods 5, 6, and 7. Thursday, we'll announce homecoming court at the volleyball home game and also sell buttons. Friday will be coronation in the fine arts. If you also notice, we've had the parade for the past couple of years, and it's been really fun. The Road Project has made it a very interesting challenge this year for the parade. So we're gonna try a walking parade for the elementary and the high school in the leaders gym and combine that with the pet fest and see how that goes. And then we'll have coronation after that. Tailgate party at Chauncey Martin starting at 5 o'clock with bouncy houses, schemes, burger meal available. And the game starting at 7 o'clock. We'll announce homecoming court and then also our gala. And then they're planning a dance on Saturday, so that'll be for grades I believe 10 through 12. Upcoming events, you'll see the homecoming week. We have two really great speakers coming in, October 8th and 9th. So if you are free either of those days, the first one is Amberly Snyder. She's gonna talk about really overcoming adversity. And then the change the outcome one is gonna be speaking to students on making good choices in terms of drugs, alcohol, some of those things that are hard decisions for kids. Some of our GROW fun things. Ms. Wang has been doing a great job. She is our Fall Play Director. She finished her casting for the Wizard of Oz. I was talking to her today, and she's got some fun kids lined up to be... To be doing the different parts. And then our Spanish students went over to the elementary and did some alphabet lessons with them. One thing for board items, you'll see Brody Center on there as a hire. He has been hired to do special ed transportation, and then he's at the high school helping with some of our special ed students when he's not in. Any questions?
Laura, just a question. I love all the activities happening in the GROW piece. One thing I wonder is when we look at the slides data and our report card, is both the advanced coursework and our demographics of who's taking shared advanced coursework and who's not, and mostly in the PSEO?
Sure.
And maybe how we're looking at...
Offering that?
Yeah. At who's accessing those.
Yeah, you know, one of the cool things is this new ECE class that we're offering. It's kind of a, it's more of a hybrid PSEO class. That one, it has been a pretty fun one to see. It's mostly females, but we've got a pretty good mix of demographics in there. So yeah, it does depend, and there is coming out an even trend. But I have noticed more and more, even in our EMT types of courses, they have a pretty good mix of demographics in those ones.
Okay.
And in the CNA classes.
Yeah, and in the CNA classes.
Yeah.
Maybe not necessarily your... Oh, like college, or like our math ones, you know, that's really kind of the upper in-house here. But yeah, and some of those other ones where it's looking where it's not, say, a four-year track. I do feel like we have a pretty good mix of student backgrounds in most.
So I wonder if that's something that we need to tap to on the recording side of things? Because when we look at the public recording side of things, it doesn't look like that, so...
Yeah, and I don't know if those ones get reported, I suppose, those types of classes. Yeah. Because they may have to consider advanced.
Right, right, so...
Yeah.
Good questions to add, me, too.
I do have the student reports. I know Eddie's working, and then McLean just finished up. Okay, they have, homecoming is coming up, September 30th through the 4th. Voting for homecoming court concluded, and the court will actually be announced tomorrow. Homecoming week, we'll be filled with dress-up days and a pet fest on Friday before the big football game on Friday night. You can tell McLean knows that one. Football has played three games, and they are 2-1. Volleyball team has had four 8-8 games, and they are 8-6. Boys soccer team is 4-3 through seven games. And the girls team is 5-2 through seven. And cross-country was back in action in these past couple of days. The last thing they have, school pitchers at the high school are next Wednesday, 25th. Not on Barbie Day for the class year.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
Hey, Larry, one. Perfect. Welcome. We are now reporting on August, fiscal year. State aid definitely started to come in. Remember, a month of July is a dry period. That's where the state holds 10% back from our funding. We'll go over our cash accounts, so starting on our investment account, $5.6 million. First deposit from state aid was just under $1.5 million, of which we withdrew 1.3 to cover all of our expenditures down at the bottom. Total investments on hand was $5.7 million. Here's all of our, all the funds that are deposited into our checking account, breaking down for funds, so if you guys can kind of see. I know seeing a big negative number in the general fund is a little scary, but that is always playing catch-up. We always make up at the end of the year. So starting with our cash account, we hearing we had a deficit balance of $432,000. But then remember again that we have a zero balance account that as soon as our account reaches zero, it pulls automatically from our investment account, so it's kind of our overdraft saving it. Okay? Deposits, we had $4.1 million, of which was the three that we withdrew from our investment account. Total accounts payable, just a little over 400K. Total payroll, $413,000. In cash on hand in our checking account, or $164,000. Overall, cash on hand between investments and checking account is $5.8 million. So, pretty healthy state to be in. We want to keep it that way, make sure that we are always in balance with our fund balance policies. And then we'll go over into our payables. We did receive a last-minute email from a former member requesting a little bit more information and some other things. So I'll quickly go into it. So WEX is our third-party business benefit administrator that houses our health savings account and our dependent care accounts in addition to our flex account. So every pay period, we deduct contributions from the district and from the employee. We group them together, and then we send them to WEX. The WEX then creates a count for each individual person that contributes into their account. And that's how people have those good health reimbursed benefits. WEX is nice that provide a debit, debit card to all of its members. So if employees have a eligible medical expense, they can go ahead and use that for that. So the expense that you see here, these two expenses, that is the contribution, both employee and district. Okay? So again, money that gets contributed by the district and deducted from the employee's paycheck to send to WEX. The other piece that they wanted more information on was Educator Benefits Consultant. Educator Benefits Consultant is another third-party administrator. They primarily help administer all of our 403B and Roth contributions. So all of, many of our employees are eligible based on which contract they're in, whether they're a teacher, whether they're 12 months, and if they've been here and meet that criteria. A lot of the times, the district contributes into a 403B. A 403B for public education is like the 401K in the private world. So the district then provides these contributions. If you're eligible, you can go ahead and contribute. We take those, we group them together, and then we send them to Educator Benefits Consultant. Educator Benefits Consultant then works with your financial advisor to say, okay, where's this money going? And again, we have like six or eight different financial institutions that are eligible, right? So you're Ameriprise, you're... You're big institutions, I can't think of the top of my head. But again, Educator Benefits Consultants primarily administer all the contributions for teachers and 12-month employee support staff, retire medicals, your 403s. Okay? Then the last question was, what is the Business Education Leadership Group? That is the LLC that is housed under Doc Brown. So if you guys recall, seen on social media, when we had staff come back, one of the big things that we introduced was Doc Brown, who was a phenomenal speaker. We had tremendous feedback. We partnered up with Battle Lake and Norman County East. And essentially, it was a staff development day for staff to hear a phenomenal story that Doc Brown had to say. So that's his company, and that is the second half of the payment that we made him to come and speak in our town. Any other questions regarding any other payables before we move on to a couple other things? Today, in the Treasurers Report, we have the, our annual max levy. Again, it's a annual process that we start as early as July, and essentially, what we do is... We want to approve the maximum, and we do that in the September board meeting because between now and December, we work with MDE and all its different departments to make sure that we are capitalizing in every dollar in terms of reimbursement and to make sure that all of our numbers in terms of what we go out to levy for, because it will impact our tax base, is accurate and truthful. So today, we want to approve the max. And December is when we actually certify the actual dollar amount. So tonight, please approve the max levy. Serves all of our educational purposes. That's all I have for you there.
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Court.
Good, we're getting a new teacher workshop and district workshop. Very busy, and there's some of the topics that were covered. Mr. Martinez talked about our speaker, Dr. Brown. Did partner with Battle Lake Schools and Norman County East Schools. Battle Lake Schools is working with us because they'd like to bring Dr. Brown back to present to our students. So we're working on that. School law training, Christie Hastings from Pemberton did school law training for us. Staff worked on curriculum standards, made right-to-know bloodborne pathogens training. And then we had our support staff on the first day, all day. And they had paraprofessional training in the afternoon, which was very good for them. So they had a lot of training on different topics regarding how to care, how to help support teachers and students in special ed. Also, thank you to Minnesota National Bank for providing lunch to staff on that day. Staffing update, as of right now, we have part-time evening custodians opening. So if you know of anyone that's looking for part-time evening custodian, which would be after 3:30, please let us know. We'd love to interview them and talk to them about the position, so... Also, we are looking for subs for teachers, for pairs, for custodians, special ed transportation. Anyone interested, if you know of anyone interested in subbing in those areas, let us know. Also, Christian Bus Service would be open to anyone that's interested in wanting to be a bus driver. So for morning and afternoon routes and activities. So they're always looking for bus drivers. Enrollment, right now, this was last week, and these were the kids that we had compared to last year. This year, we're at 8:29, and then last year, we were at 8:35. You have to remember, we graduated 79 seniors, and we have 63 kindergarten students enrolled right now. Pre-K through 12th grade enrollment's a little bit different. Right now, though, we are down. When you look at pre-K through 12th grade, right now, our numbers in pre-K 3s, our three-year-olds, are a small number right now, so... But they'll be good. I think in October, we'll have a better idea, and then they'll be able to help us for planning for the future. School board and agenda items, a few things. I think our principals covered most of them. We do have a couple resignations in the custodial area that were not covered, but I believe everything else was covered in the agenda. Viking Gala, that was covered, that's October 5th. If you're interested in tickets for the Viking Gala, that money raised by the foundation, and that goes towards helping out our teachers in the classrooms, so... Questions? Okay, thank you.
Alright, any final questions? We'll move on to consent items. I may approve board meeting minutes, August 22nd, 2024, regular school board meeting. B, financial plans and August bills. C, treasures report. D, we have some donations, except donations teachers supply $600 Pelican Valley Living Center. Student accounts, $100, Water Clinic. Viking Boutique, $100, Water Clinic. I may personnel, approve the resignation of Alejandra Rivera as full-time custodian at the high school. Prove the resignation of Naomi Gutierrez as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Prove the resignation of Mayra Diaz as part-time evening custodian at the elementary. Prove the hire of Anissa Berg as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Prove the hire of Alyssa Eppard as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Prove the hire of Brody Center as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. We have a motion for the consent items.
I'll make a motion.
Stacy, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. No discussion? Just gonna give a thanks to our big donations that we got, so... I'm surprised that donations didn't end, so appreciate that. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all's favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. We carry. One business item, certify the proposed tax levy for the tax year 2024 and 2025 at the maximum amount.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ann. Do you want to word it just like that?
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all's favor approving the one business item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Motion carries. Upcoming meetings, October 21st, irregular meetings at 6:00 PM. And November 13th, irregular meetings at 6:00 PM. So should we entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all's favor adjuring, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.